I'd like to call the school board meeting to order. Please note, everyone is present except Tammy, who was going to be joining us remotely, but there's no power in California, so she can't.[22.01][22.01](Laughter). Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one open forum member, Lindsay Vogel, wanted to speak for a while.
You can come up, come up to the mic there.
You can sit there if you want.[61.62][61.62](Laughter).
You need to sit in the mic, though.
I think it's really great that the pool is being considered in New Prague. It's been a long time in need, and it'll meet so many community needs. It's perfect timing with the middle school building needs, and we would love to do the sport that we love in our community. And we'd like to thank the task force and the school board for considering this. Thank you.
Thank you. Note, there's a few other swimmers in the audience here to watch the presentation. And we have a special presentation to some deserving athletes that Tim is gonna do.
Yes, I'd like Maria Berg and Britton Thompson to please come up and sit down. We, this fall, in New Prague High School, we didn't have any teams make any state tournaments, but we had two individuals, Maria being a junior in New Prague High School, her parents are Mark and Julie, and then Britton is a senior, and she's in swimming and diving. I should mention Maria is cross-country running, and Britton is in swimming, and her parents are Mark and Kristen. So, we want to recognize them tonight. Maria made state, made the state meet in cross-country this past year. In fact, I go back to last year, she was also in Nordic skiing. She made the state meet in Nordic skiing, and then also in track and field in the 800-meter run. So, she's had a, she's an excellent three-sport athlete, great accomplishments, and like I said, she's just a junior. Britton has made state in diving, she represents our swimming and diving team, and she is one of the best divers in the state of Minnesota. She qualified for state as a freshman, and then again, as, she just missed out as her sophomore year by one place, did not qualify for state, but she came back her junior year, qualified for state, competed in the state meet that year, and this past year placed third in the state meet. And I know she's considering options, maybe she can talk about that tonight, too, for college. I think she's gonna continue her diving career at the collegiate level. And so, we're very proud of these two students. They're excellent student athletes, and they represent the New Prague area schools in a great way. So, thank you.[210.31][210.31](Applause).
Did you want to talk about your plans for next year? I'm sure your mom would want to know.[221.12][221.12](Laughter).
Well, I'm not quite sure where I'm going yet. I visited University of North Carolina Wilmington a month ago, and I met the coach at a camp, so I just kinda like it a lot there. I feel like I kinda belong there. And I also visited St. Cloud State University. They're really well-known for their swimming and diving program, so it was neat to visit their school also. So, now I just got to decide.
Do you practice year-round?
I don't. I only practice during the season and in the summer with like camps and open pools and stuff.
I think, Britton, you got your start, too, in that, I mean, you were, formerly you were in gymnastics, too?
Yeah. I was a previous gymnast and then had to quit and converted to diving.
Yep. And then Maria, you want to talk about cross-country running and getting ready? I suppose you've already started practicing Nordic skiing?
Yep. I didn't have much of a break in between sports, but I love what I do, and cross-country was a lot of fun, especially with my team. I feel like the attitude has kind of switched, and it's a lot more positive, and we're just having a lot of fun. And the results might not show up, but we've improved a lot, and looking forward to next season.
All right, well, great.
We have a few things for you here.
Yeah, if you could come up, and board members.[302.12][302.12](Laughter).
Have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any comments, Don?
Not today.
Not yet, huh? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee reports.
Okay, with policy, first I want to, first off, I want to thank Janelle, because she's putting our policies in order, so we can now be on a three-year cycle, so I know she's been taken out, working on that. For us, thank you. And we adopted two new policies. One's 606 Textbooks and Instructional Materials Procedure, and the second one we adopted is Policy 515, Retention and Destruction of Student Records for Special Education Students. So, we're well on our way in our policies. I don't know, we did like what, almost, how many did we do last time? I counted. So, and we meet next month. All I have.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Southwest Metro?
Southwest Metro took the month off. We will reconvene in January to do the organizational meeting. And while I've got the board, I'll cover CPAC. We had our CPAC meeting this Tuesday, and at the CPAC meeting, we had a presentation by Barb Zweber, who is one of our OTs, and she did a presentation on sensory deprivation and sensory absorption and stimulation. It was a very nice presentation. And then we had Chris Luce, who did a presentation. She is a parent advocate, a parent of a student who has done very well, even though he's got a disability of autism. He's a senior this year and played football throughout the whole season. And she's a parent advocate, actually employed as a consultant by other parents who need some assistance in working through the programs and getting the assistance that sometimes special needs parents might not be aware of.
Getting a good turnout now in the morning meetings?
Our turnout was not as good this time as it was in September, but still, well, we did something. We were taping it, and that meeting and the presentations will be available for other people to view as well, so people can still access that information, even though they were not at the meeting themselves.
They're aware of that, I assume, or will be.
Yes.
Good.
Next, we have Community Ed.
Community Ed has not met since last, early November. The close, reminder everybody, the closing has changed down at the Fayette area of this school is going strong. Remember, you have to have a appointment, you have to call ahead, can't just show up and necessarily go down there. And I'm not sure how that's going, I haven't heard anything. And the other thing is that on Black Friday, there was a arts and culture, or whatever, dance fundraiser for Community Ed, and the Little Chicago Band played, and sounded very well. And in between playing, when they would close down, then there were several young ancients that would go up and get their feet wet, so to speak. There were some vendors there, and overall, fair crowd, not what they expected, but fair crowd and Little Chicago Band played well. The number of people in the Little Chicago Band is more than the number of people in the city of Little Chicago, so.[661.62][661.62](Laughter).
Thank you. Next, we have our superintendent updates.
Yeah, as you are aware, that Stephanie Stromy, our Foods Service Director, resigned to take another position elsewhere, so we're in the process right now of interviewing, and shortly we'll have a new Foods Service Director here, and we'll get that information to you soon. And then I'll just go into good news here. I have one announcement to make, and that's, I want to congratulate our head girls basketball coach, middle school science teacher, Ron Gunderson. He's been selected to receive the Breaking Barriers Award from the Women in Athletic Leadership. This honor will be presented to Ron at the Minnesota History Center on February 4th, and this event coincides the celebration for National Girls and Women in Sports Day. So, really nice honor for Ron Gunderson. I'm trying to count the number of years, I think he's been the head girls basketball coach here in New Prague for, I believe, 37 years now. So, just want to announce that, and we just, Brad Skogarbo was just informed of that honor the other day, so I thought I'd share it with you right now.
All right. Next on the agenda, our Facilities Task Force presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna start it out here, and this process began with your approval last spring, and we have representatives tonight that we'll introduce here in a second that played a big part in this. But I'm gonna go over the agenda right now on our second slide there. What you're gonna hear, go back one, please. Okay, we'll go through overview here. This group met, the very first meeting we had was Von Dirks, who is the architect representing from Old Architect, went over sort of an overview of the whole process, went over expectations and just what the norms of the group would be. Along with, at that time, too, the very first meeting, everyone sort of expressed what their feelings or opinions were in regards to the district's facilities. The data was provided, information on demographics, and just, we did a facility analysis that was shared. We had the task force agree on criteria. And then probably at the last three or four meetings, there was a lot of review and discussion on different options, and after they decided what the highest priority needs were. And finally, the last step in the process was to make a decision or make a recommendation. So, I've got a group of people here today that represent the 33 members that were part of this task force. It's a wide representation. We met seven times, starting on September 10th. We had, we were gonna have six meetings, but we didn't quite finish in time, so we went seven meetings, the last one being on December 3rd, and each of the meetings basically started right on time and ended close to being on time, so two hours, but it was a fantastic task force, very diverse group, from all parts of the district, all ages. They met, and we had tours of all the buildings before each of the meetings, and so there was a lot of hours, you could see over 2,000 total member hours. And like I said, old architects and ICS consulting facility, and they did a great job. So, this group here is tonight, they were, their main responsibility is make a recommendation of the school board, and that's why they're here tonight. So, they're gonna take us through the recommendation tonight. Chris Reamer, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chris Reamer. I've been a resident of the district since 2000. We had 33 members, as Tim had stated, on our team, and spent a lot of time and consideration in taking a look at what we were doing here. We looked at the capacity and enrollment projections, grade configurations, programming issues, activities, as well as community ed and early childhood programming. We also were able to do tours of the facilities and looked at physical conditions, some of the operational issues that were out there, and get a good feel for the sites and property that we saw. One of the other areas that we looked at as we moved forward here was safety and security issues, technology issues, and then, of course, funding mechanisms as we move forward. We developed the criteria as the meeting went on through guidance from the architects, but also mostly from committee members here tonight being represented. And then we developed options for each of the plans that we had, and tonight we'll make a recommendation to you what we came from that. Our first step will be to go through some of the data and the criteria that we gathered. We looked at the capacity versus enrollment right now. Some of the things that we need to take a look at is over the next 10 years, the middle and the high school will continue to grow based on the studies that we've seen out there. Our elementary schools are anticipated to decline or remain about the same. Currently, the only way to accommodate all of the students we have in the sixth-grade building for most of the day is to have them at the CEC and then walk them across the building in the middle of the day to continue their programming. We looked at all of the buildings that were out there, and none of the buildings that we had available to us were able to allow the shift of a whole grade level. That was one of the things we looked at, to try to get students into one building, and we were not able to do that with the existing facilities that we had. Some of the options that we looked at are listed here on the slide here. Obviously, we wanted to look at what our possibility of future capacity needs were. One of the criteria that we laid out there is we did not want to build big buildings and overbuild them. We wanted to make sure we were being fiscally responsible in guiding the board in what their thoughts might be on that. One of the main criteria that we looked at was the sixth grade to be included in a full building, and continued use of the CEC was pretty much seen as unacceptable across the whole committee. The goal is to get all the students together, learning together. Grade configure operate, options we looked at, we looked, as I said here, 8 to 12, K-6, K-235, 5678, and K-8 were grades that we, configurations that we felt were unacceptable based on the educational goals of the school district and what we seen as residents of the district. Acceptable grade configurations are what we're currently doing, K-5, 68, and 912, but we also considered, based on some of the changes coming to early childhood, that we may have to, at some point, consider a K-4, 58, and 912. Our main goal in looking at this was to continue the pod setup that we have right now at the middle school, where the classrooms are able to break out with their teacher, but then also come together as a small group to help facilitate learning with them. We also looked at the activities that are out there. We want to make sure that we have facilities that will easily accommodate all the district's sports. As we looked down here, obviously, we do a good job with our track and stadium. It's been a great addition to our district. Our practice football field, soccer, tennis, baseball, softball, again, we've got great facilities in those areas. An area that did stick out to us as a need was the pool. Currently, we do not have a pool here in our district that will accommodate either the curriculum that we're looking at or the teams that we have that would like to participate in that. We also looked at some of the community activities that were out there. Our goal would be, as we're moving forward here, to see what are the opportunities to partner with the city. The city of New Prague obviously had recently done a pool study, and how can we partner with them as we look at that? There are some scheduling issues that we may run into, since we have people in the school during the day, but, and we may have community use for that, but we did feel, based on the recommendation we'll make tonight, that that is something we could work through. Most important, one of the things we looked at was we were looking across our district, whether we looked at, one of the four options tonight was we did not want to decrease any of the field spaces we have as far as soccer fields, baseball fields, and so on, so we wanted to make sure we could maintain that. We also felt, as I said before, a pool would be part of the curriculum at the middle school and a community asset. Our goal was to find a spot where the pool could be either connected to or adjacent or near a middle school, so it would be able to easily be part of that curriculum. As a joint asset, as I mentioned, we would want to make sure that we're discussing with the community where we might be able to partner with them on that. City and community discussions would be facilitated as we move forward by the district and the We also looked at community ed and early childhood data here. Currently, early childhood has a program waiting list right now. We have around 260 students enrolled at three sites. The goal would be to increase to four days with over 400 students. Right now, with the addition of all-day kindergarten, we feel that there will be an increase in the early childhood area, and that is something that we'll need to find a way to accommodate as a district. It would be good to have more space at the community ed building, just so that our ECFE and community ed group can use these buildings in a different way. For community ed and early childhood, we looked at keeping the current grouping that we have geographical, so you have ECFE available to you close to your neighborhood. Seems to be most successful that way. Early childhood could and should expand to more three- and four-year-old programming, including potentially full-day options at some point. And then one of the things we looked at for the adult and community options is how can we better use the facilities that we have for them for daytime programming? Currently, we have very limited use on that. One of the options that we looked at here that you'll see will allow for good security to maintain those community ed options, where we'll be able to keep our students secure and still allow for community options to occur during the day. I'll bring Ron up to also discuss the next section here.
Thank you. I'm Ron DeValk, and it's been a pleasure to be on this committee, and I've got a few things on safety and security. We basically looked at the security of all the buildings in the district, and the committee looked at all of those, and went through that whole process to see where we're at and how we fit, and is it practical and does it work? And it's obvious that the school district has done a lot of work already in safety and security of our buildings, and we felt that, at the present time, that the safety and security of the school and the buildings are adequate right now, but if we have new, if we would remodel or do anything to our buildings, we would enhance that security when those options would become available. And that would be basically looking at relocating offices to the front door, possibly those types of things, so it makes it more obvious that people can see out, secretarial staff can see out into the, when people are coming through the doors and the buildings and things like that. The other one, Chris also mentioned, that we really were concerned about the sixth-grade classroom or classes leaving this particular facility and going over to the middle school, and we'll have 300 kids at a time moving those kids over and back and forth, and we felt that, not only from a security standpoint, but it's a really good team effort to have the six through eight in one building. And that will lessen that by trying to work and trying to get everybody back into the middle school itself. We do have intercom doors and locking systems, so currently, right now, if you would go to a facility, I know if I went to the high school, I'd have to push a buzzer, the person would see me and recognize me and then let me inside the building. And we felt that, as a committee, that seems to be working pretty adequate for the school district. We felt pretty good, pretty good about that one.[1484.83][1484.83](Applause). The criteria, physical conditions data, we really looked at, and they provided us with a lot of information to try to categorize everything of where some deficiencies might be and what things we'd have to look at. Those kind of figures stand out. It looks like a lot of the mechanical systems need a lot of work, heating systems, roofs, ventilation systems, those types of things. Those are just general maintenance type of things, but those are things that are out there that we really took a look at and to try to address and try to prioritize. The other one is basically, the CEC is probably the one that has the most need right off the, from the start, and then followed by Falcon Ridge and then the middle school. And the CEC is very functional, but there are some things that need to be done as part of our, when we looked at the whole recommendation, how does that all fit in? And we'll get into that later. The other one that I would talk about, we talked about the transportation facility where we park all the buses and the vehicles. Not every vehicle or bus or car are undercover. We thought that would be really nice to have everything in one garage. That way, it would actually lessen the wear and tear on the vehicles. They would not have to have a bunch of snow and things like that in the wintertime, and then they could just take off from the garage. We also felt that, even though that is a priority, we also felt that, based on our recommendation and where we go, that if that didn't happen right away, that we would probably push harder for the educational component than the bus garage. The bus garage isn't, is out there, it's not a major issue, but if that happened, that would be great, but we would also push for the educational process or component of that.
As we looked at the facilities across there, the things we looked at mostly were heating, ventilation, and quality issues of the building, and we're very lucky that we've got a great staff onboard. They keep our buildings in good shape, but there is just so much you can do with the current state of the buildings that we have, that these requirements for upgrades are gonna, are coming at us sooner rather than later. So, our goal is how do we work to best utilize what we have and still give our students the education that they deserve?
We, as a committee, also, just so you know, had an opportunity to visit all the facilities, most of all the facilities, so we had a half hour or an hour before a regular meeting that we would actually tour the facilities, so it gave us an opportunity to see how, what kind of shape they were in also. Thanks, Chris.
Rob will be joining us here.
Good evening, my name is Rob Luco, and I'd like to echo what Ron and Chris were saying. We found the tours were very, very informational, and gotta really give hats off to the school district and the board for keeping the facilities in such good shape as they are. It's real, real good credit to the community. In addition to some of the specific criteria that were discussed earlier, we also had some general criteria that we tried to follow throughout our meetings. First of all, first rule, we wanted to be smart. We didn't want to propose anything silly like tearing everything down and building everything brand-new, because just didn't have time for wasting on that type of thing, or the financials. That would be the financial impact to the community and voters was strongly taken into account. Secondly, because we spent time talking about possible demolition of facilities or buildings, we agreed that anything that would be proposed like that, the board would have to take into consideration, community sentiment, particularly emotional attachment to any buildings that might be taken down in this process. Again, I'll reiterate that options had to be consideration, or considered for financial impact, and they needed to be affordable to the community. Finally, options had to be apples-to-apples. It wasn't all right for one option to resolve some criteria and others to resolve others. The point of developing the criteria was to have the entire needs, as we found them, to be addressed.
One of the things that was nice is we were able to adjust it as we moved through. I'll tell you, I had probably different ideas from when I started on the committee at our first meeting to where we ended, but we were able to adjust them, and as Rob said, we worked hard to make sure that it was an apples-to-apples comparison. So, all four of the options that we looked at, we worked to make sure that the education would be the same, the curriculum would remain the same. The only thing that would be different is which building we're doing it in.
Yes, basically, to summarize the needs that this criteria and any option would be addressing, I think first and foremost, the loudest was- I think first and foremost, the loudest was having the sixth grade in one building. Not transporting them back and forth across the street a couple times a day possibly. Early childhood spaces being expanded and providing better services for that group of public users. The remaining safety and security issues the district has to be addressed. To take care of critical deferred maintenance actions. An indoor pool for school athletics and community use was brought up very frequently. And to be financially responsible was also high on the priority list. And if possible, as was mentioned earlier, having all the district vehicles parked inside. We see benefits to that.
Sure. The criteria that we looked at was option A, additions to our existing middle school. Option B, additions or renovations to the CEC. And that would be converting the CEC through major renovations and additions, and then relocating the early childhood building back over to the middle school. Option C was to build a new middle school off-site. We looked at, obviously, we need about a 40-acre site. That would need to be determined at some point. We looked at relocating early childhood and community ed programming to the existing middle school, and then demolish and redevelop the CEC building. That was our new site. And then we also looked to build a new middle school for a portion of the district on the east side, the Elko New Market area. Again, as I said, we really tried to make sure it was apples-to-apples. So all four of the options that we looked at were equal in what they would provide the students. This is what the options would look like?
This is the first version we looked at and involved closing off Central Avenue. We spent a lot of time discussing this, and then I'd say for a good chunk of it, this was the preferred option. Here's the following slides. The grade classrooms and labs would be accomplished through a two-story addition to the building.
Kind of on the south side of the building there. If you can see, there's like five bubbles. That's where the sixth grade would go to, go in?
The office would move to a location near the front door, and that was to address some of the security concerns.
And if you see here, you've got the main entry arrow coming into the building. The office would be just adjacent to that?
We would expand the locker commons and relocate special ed into the existing office location, which is where the existing office location is. And the kitchen and cafeteria would be expanded.
Off to the, be the left side of your screen next to where the current kitchen is.
And in this particular version on the lower area, there's additional parking with the auxiliary gym and the pool.
Obviously, as Rob said, one of the concerns with this is the potential closing of Central Avenue and what that might mean to do it. It accomplished what we were looking at, but there were other things that we would, would not have there. This here kind of shows you a bigger picture of the site there.
That also have, would have required us, due to our criteria, to locate other green space for relocating ball fields.
And then you can see there's a bit of a traffic flow there. And then the next slide here shows there were utility lines that would need to be addressed. Obviously, we couldn't have them under a pool or auxiliary gym area. So there would need to be some improvements that we would have to look at. And that was pretty much A1 as we saw it.
A2 was an option that came up a little bit later on in discussions, and it, for all intents and purposes, has the same features as the original option A, which is now A1. The main difference, it would locate the pool and the gym across the street, leaving Central Avenue in place, and a skyway would have been built over Central Avenue.
This is what that would look like on the current sites. Obviously, our big concern here is loss of fields to accomplish what we're looking to do there.
Also, there was some financial expenses to building a skyway and.
Right. Option A3 was to build on the site. After a lot of discussion, the criteria of the pool being attached to the middle school versus near the middle school was revisited. As I said earlier, we did adjust our criteria as we moved through, and this is something that came out of that discussion. District administrators gave us perspective on other middle school fiat activities that we do, such as bowling or other outdoor activities that the students participate in that do require them to occasionally leave the school site to do that. Given that swimming would be a limited unit, and there would be a potential benefit to the community to have it separated from the school during the day, we decided that we would revise A3 and allow the middle school instead to stand alone and attach the pool to the CEC. With this, all of the middle school components of A1 and A2 are there. You can see we still have our classrooms, our expanded kitchen. We've moved an auxiliary gym off to the left side of the screen there. The pool would be in addition to the CEC, and I'll show you that here. You can see here that the CEC building, the red arrow is where the current bus loop is, and the students would enter into the vestibule and the gym area. Next to that is where we would add an eight-lane pool with a diving well as well as locker rooms. Again, keeping our transportation time between the schools minimal for the students.
Go back one slide. One thing to point out in this particular one, the architects also, in the little check-marked red boxes, allow for an additional 100 students, I believe it was, to be, for future building. So it allows this site to be even expandable beyond what we're looking at here.
And option A3 with the build-on-site, you can see what we're looking at there. The red boxes, or the white box with the red outline would be new additions to the school or future additions that could be added, as well as the pool off to the right here on the right-hand side. Option A seemed to make the most sense to most of us, as it was not a higher cost. Our goal was, again, to be physically responsible with what we were looking at. Oh, that was right. Exactly. A3, one of the nice things about this, as you can see, we lose no softball fields. We lose no soccer fields. We're able to maintain what we've got and use just the parking lot area, which normally has plenty of space in it for where our pool would be.
Oh, yeah. On the south end of the building that would, where the demolition would occur, and that's, would be turned into additional parking areas, and that was.
That would be the 1923 building. Just based on the maintenance that it would require, that was an area that we looked at as a spot where we could add additional parking to accommodate the additional ECFE that would be going on there as well as community activities. And it was a portion of the building that was probably the most expensive to maintain and keep up, so.
And I believe this, this version of A3 was less expensive than A1 and 2.
Yeah, slightly less.
And we'll have Jim come up. Is there anything else, or? Chris, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Chris Tuma Smith, and I'm from Longsdale. Been in the district since 2005. My wife was born and raised in the district and graduated from New Prague '93. I'm here to discuss option B, which essentially, you've heard of all, A through, A1 to 2, A3. Essentially, option B through D, Jim and I will talk about that. Option B essentially was to look at potentially reusing the CEC building. Essentially, refurbishing it, moving the middle school kids, and moving six through eight to this building. The, one of the things we learned in the tour with Mr. Gregor at the middle school is that the middle school uses a pod scenario. And we would like to keep that scenario in the new development. So that would require quite a bit of an extensive refurbishment of this building in order to make that pod scenario work. It would, part of this issue also with the CEC would ultimately be an issue with a lot of phased work, a lot of relocation of existing students. The CEC occupants essentially would have to find different places to be while this building is being refurbished from front to back. And we found that to be a possible issue if that were to take place in the future. It didn't seem to be our smartest solution for the issues that we had in front of us. And essentially, it was removed from consideration that we would use this building as a refurbishment building. Jim, let's come up and talk about option C.
Yep. Last two options we looked at were option C and D, and Jim will cover that.
Hi, I'm Jim Conley. Been in the district all my life, and a lot of you know me from way back. And C and D were, as you can tell, were in the running for quite a while. Option C, a new middle school on the site to be determined, would not include an auditorium, which is in the current one now, and a pool could be part of it or not. It would allow the perfect design, so to speak, and it'd all be brand-new. The site to be determined was also, I might add, a concern. We don't know where, where and what cost, and it's a little bit, you know, going on. So that stayed in the consideration. Option D was to build a smaller middle school on the eastern side of the district. And adjusting the boundaries would be never a fun thing. Enrollment projections don't validate the growth in this area to be the best spot, at least currently. A smaller middle school would also mean different programming options than a combined middle school that currently exists. This would also have a higher operational cost than you might, than you would be by adding another building to the district as opposed to an addition or repurposing. Many determine at this time that a middle school on the eastern side wasn't practical and was removed from consideration. And as we go forward, we'll talk about option C. But we, it's important that you note that we looked at C and D, you know, as long as we could, viably, as being. I think the group, and I will add, did a very good job of not rushing any quick decisions on any of these options. It was a slow but steady progressive process that these options were thought through and.
One of the things too, when we looked at options C and D, obviously, some of the cost things that we'll get into, C was the most expensive of the items that we looked at. And then D, a major concern with that was making sure we can maintain similar activities and curriculum for both middle schools. We just didn't feel that that was something that we'd be able to do at this point, but would be something that probably would be revisited at another point. Yes, I was going to mention that. That's right. One of the things that we really liked about our current structure is we really do have that campus feel, where you've got an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, and they're all pretty much within walking distance of each other. Both C and D kind of changed that up for us. We're not sure where a middle school, if we were to build a new one, might end up. Also, obviously, if we have one on the other side of the district at this point, that also didn't add to that campus feel, where, right now, our middle school can use the track very easily. Our high school can use a track very easily. Also, they can go back and forth between the buildings for different activities that may, may come up. One of the processes we used as we were going through this was a SWOT analysis. Bob will cover that.
Hi, I'm Bob Hanson, relatively new in town, but a community activist, as many of you may have already realized. We did start with a SWOT analysis, and we revisited various parts of this throughout the discussion. But each option was evaluated according to its SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Strengths and weaknesses were looked at in terms of the district educational goals. The opportunities and threats, there we took in more of the community considerations and goals and perceptions. This was, this led to the eliminations of option B and D. So now it came down to consideration of either A or C, and we've discussed what those were. We spent a lot of time discussing the merits of each of these versions. Included in this discussion is which would be perceived as the best decision for the community and by the community? What would be done with the CEC building if we started a new, if we build a brand-new middle school? Was there a reason that the existing middle school would continue to work as a middle school? Which option made the best sense for the future, the long-term future? Where would the new middle school be built? That was a big issue. Was this an advantage? By moving everything into one site, would that be advantageous, or would we lose that campus concept? One of the biggest considerations, the final considerations, and it led to our adding an extra meeting night, was the cost. Each of the option A versions were similar in cost, although option A2 costs a little more because of the skyway. A1 would require getting the city to close the street and relocate all the utility and traffic, and there were several other side issues involved. A3 was the easiest and slightly less expensive of those options. So A1 through 3, that's still keeping the campus concept in the north side of New Prague. A2 was felt to be less feasible because of the skyway.
And the, and the green space, certainly.
And, oh, yes.
We would lose field space across from where our current middle school is to accommodate A2.
Okay. And option A1, although attached, do require the politics and expenses of closing the street, it didn't provide the same opportunities that having a pool as part of the CEC would provide. So it was removed from consideration.
And again, we would lose green space for that. I mean, the goal is to maintain as much green space as we have. We're on a kind of a hemmed-in area. We don't have a lot of space to go. And we want to be sure that our kids are getting that outdoor time as, as much as possible.
Yeah. A3 gives us, gives us the opportunity of losing part of a parking spot, but we gain part of that back with the demolition. Otherwise, all the rest stays in where, in the locations they're at now. So all the facilities, green space, are still intact.
Initial projections they put out there for us are showing here 50 to 52 and 50 to 51 for A1 and A2, and then 55 to 56, I'm sorry, for A3, and then 55 to 56 for A2. They did say these were preliminary budgets. Based on inflation, we would probably need to figure about an additional 10%. You could see A3 go as high as 56. And the other ones also increase based on, right now, what looks to be a fairly big building season moving forward, so.
Post-election, a number of communities passed school bond issues, and contractors will be busy trying to complete all those projects. So we'll have to, we'll be late getting in on that kind of discussion or contract bidding. The cost of A was compared with option C. And the problem with option C is there's still big unknown costs. Where would we get the land? How much would it cost? And how much would we have to add utility development? If we could get something close to the current campus, utility development might not be so bad. But if we picked some of the other locations that considered or raised, we'd have significant street, water and sewer and other lighting issues to bring in onboard.
The thought was that, again, at the time, they felt a preliminary budget on this was around 74 to 78 million, but with inflation, probably over 80 million. And also, looking at unknown of the utilities in the area, that could play a big role in what we're looking at also.
So a big issue with the cost was what is the tax impact? So time was spent to give us detail of the different options with a variety of looks at what is the tax impact. This slide shows the potential tax impact for homes. Note the average-priced home within the district, 150,000. If it's, if we go with the 50 million, it's $72 annually. If we go with the 56 million, it's $81. And 75 million would, would yield to $121 for an average home.
Per year?
Per year, yes. We also looked at how it may impact commercial and agric. We also looked at how it may impact commercial and agricultural. They were able to give us a chart on that, but this here showed the home prices and how it would impact your home.
And Chris, we do have that on our website, too, and we'll get that information out for agricultural and business.
In conclusion, I guess, we had a lot of good discussions on these options. We all had a chance to voice the ideas that we had. We considered the pros and the cons as a committee. It should be noted that it was not a unanimous decision, as we set out on there. Out of 33, there were four that weren't onboard right away, but after some discussion, they felt that it was probably best to move forward with this final recommendation. The recommendation that we made after all the consideration was the options that best, to best meet our goals and plans for the future, we would recommend that the school board consider the following. First, additions to the middle school to accommodate the 6th through the 8th grade in one building. Second, a pool and locker room addition to the CEC. Third, demolition of the 1923 portion of the CEC. Fourth, minor renovations to the CEC to accommodate a relocated ALC program, as well as expansion of our early childhood programming. And then finally, critical deferred maintenance at the middle school, the CEC, and Falcon Ridge. We also do have, as a lower recommendation, certainly for the board to take a look at the transportation building. We feel that the options provided, provide a appropriate learning space for all of our students, as well as the needs of our community residents, making needed physical investments in our buildings to preserve our assets, and addresses our concerns for the safety of our students and our staff. We believe this is the right fiscal investment to make in our schools, and we encourage the board to consider the implementation of this recommendation as part of the district's facility plans. One of the other things I wanted to say, and I'll open it us up to any of our committee members that are here for their thoughts or questions that you have, it was a very open planning committee. We had a lot of different ideas brought forth, very good guidance from the people who we had there guiding us, but also opportunity to walk through each of the buildings, get to see how they're functioning. And we were very lucky that a lot of the people on the committee either had children who'd gone through the school district or have children in the school district, so we all had a good feel for what we were looking at. Other comments, guys, ladies?
I just have a comment. I only echo what Chris has had said, being on the committee. I just have a few comments that the task force had a wide variety of community members, which made it very interesting for us to have these open discussions, which I thought was really helpful. It was, again, a community-based discussion in our task force. We had really good, open communication. Anytime we'd ask for additional information as a task force of the superintendent or the architect, they would provide that information to us in a very fast manner, so the next meeting, we would have that information so we could make informed decisions. So that was really a good, good thing for us. Again, touring the facilities, not only touring the facilities, but we also had a chance to have the principals of each facilities give us an idea of how that building works, what their goals are for that building, and what they're trying to accomplish at each grade level within that, within that building. And that was very helpful for us to get a better understanding of how those buildings function. A lot of times, you just see them from the outside. You don't really get to see them from the inside, and what all the good work that's going on, on the inside that's happening. We all had an opportunity to voice our opinions. The process was very transparent, and so everything was in the open. The one thing that I thought was really good about this committee and the facilitators, Superintendent Burner did, is that everyone respected everybody's opinion, so we didn't ever walk away being disgruntled or anything like that. We had open, good, honest discussions, but we walked away respectful of each other's opinions. And that's, that's really good to have on this type of committee, because it does open it up, and then there's a lot of discussions, and that creates more ideas and more solutions to some of the problems that we're trying to solve and make those recommendations. I think, in my opinion, I think the superintendent did a great job of helping us get to this process and providing information. I really feel that not only is this a good recommendation for the school district, it's really good for the students, it's also really good for the teachers that have to be in those buildings to teach our children and those types of things, and it's also really good for the community. And I'm a community member, my kids have gone through the New Prague schools, and if you ever go outside of New Prague and mention New Prague School System, you know whatever here, but positive things. So I think this is a lot of good work that we've done, and I think it's really, really good for the community and for the school, and it keeps us in a positive, in a positive light. And I would just appreciate if I could be on the committee, so, that's all I, yep.
I echo Ron's point there. One of the things that I enjoyed about it, too, was we had a lot of good input. Everybody went home and they talked to their neighbors, they talked to their community members, they talked to other people that would be impacted by this, and brought their ideas back. So beyond the 33 people that were on this committee, we represented hundreds of people across the community, and I think that was probably one of the best things about it. We were encouraged to do that each meeting, so.
Jim, let's...
Across the district, yeah?
Thank you all. I'm not going to repeat, all his great compliments to superintendent and the staff, and Vaughn with the world did a great job. But, you know, I, too, have been through the school system, my many generations, my kids, now my grandkids, but as a member, everything they said was remarkable. And I think, in my eyes, as a taxpayer and a voter since getting out of college in the mid-'70s, I voted and watched a lot of ups and downs. I've seen a lot of things fail and pass, and I bring that to the table, what, you know, what's the perception going to be? What's good for the kids? What's good for the pocketbook? What's good for the future of New Prague schools? And all said and done, I think that some of the three or four things that, I think I speak for just about everybody, is that, you know, the new school had some real pros. There were some real advantages to that. And there were some ideas to this, modifying this, and we all talked about the pros and cons. But I think at the end of the whole thing, we all kind of came to the feeling, is probably the biggest feelings that I think a lot of us felt, when we have a really good middle school, and that building is set up as a middle school, unbeknown to me, that the changes that would have to happen if you didn't do that. So adding on to an existing, functioning, good middle school, and that's the thing we're after, along with including more gym space and expanding our early childhood development in another location, along with the pool that's 30 years incoming, I think those features all kind of made a good modification, and we brought the dollar amount to where, you know, no, we don't need a skyway, we don't lose green space, we don't have to go out and buy property that we don't know where it's going to be. And I think that those six or seven big items, adding on to a beautiful middle school, adding on to a school that's, you know, very functional in the '60s building, getting rid of the 1923 thing, and then another thing, I think, and my bullet point was that we're taking care of a lot of this expensive maintenance. And to put this in this recommendation takes care of a lot of big but loose ends out there. So I think that we really did a good job of looking at all of this, bringing it together, this recommendation to expand the middle school and do all the things we want to do to this property right here, without tearing out a street and without, you know, getting real controversial and doing things. And, of course, the perception of a new building on our property, what's wrong with the building? I look at, you know, the people in the coffee shops and say, what's wrong with the building you've got? And I think we'd had all those discussions, and I, I think most of us, if not all of us, feel that we really looked at it from 360 degrees at all times. And, you know, I can go home tonight after all these years in the school district, and I've had my ups and downs with some issues, but I think that, bottom line, I think, we really came together with a solid, well-rounded recommendation. So we really, you know, we really want to support this as a group and take this forward and get it all done. And thank you again.
Before I open it up for questions from the board for you guys, I want to thank all the members of the task force that are here and the ones that aren't here. Jerry and I attended all the meetings, and I was very impressed with how well it ran. I think every person on the task force spoke, some more than others, but everyone had their input. At the end, you know, even, even the four who still preferred the brand-new building understood the recommendation that the task force was going to present tonight. And Vaughn does a really good job facilitating those meetings and making sure everyone understands where everyone else is coming for. So thank you for all the time you guys put into this. And does anyone else have any questions of the task force?
I just want to follow up a little bit on that middle school concert, or new middle school in New Market. I know a lot of people anticipate there would be a middle school in New Market, but we did have representation from the New Market ALCO, and they did agree at this time that now is not the time to build that school out there. So that was looked at very closely, and...
We looked at it very closely, and just based on projections, you know, certainly, we own that land, and that would be something to be considered at a future time, but this just isn't that time based on our enrollment projections and our fiscal idea, as well as maintaining a equal level of education for students from both sides of the district. One of the things we get to maintain when we look at A3 is we get to keep an auditorium, too, that would not be part of a new school. That would be something that we were lucky to take over that building and add that to where we're at, so.
Yeah, I just want to mention, too, I, we've got Tracy Torgerson and Doug Killian are both here. They didn't speak, Tracy sort of did in the background there. But they were also here, and I know Chris Tuma-Smith said this before the meeting, you know, he wishes he would have said something and asked all the task force members to come, and we had 33. And I'm telling you, if Doug, or if Chris would have mentioned that, I truly believe there would have been 29 or 30 of the 33 here tonight. We had great attendance at, at every meeting, and I've looked at past history on that, and that hasn't always been the case. But we had, like I said earlier, a very diverse group, but we had great attendance. I think the lowest-attended meeting we had was 25 people. The last meeting we had, I think we're just missing a couple people at the last meeting. It was great, and, and, you know, even, I think, you know, there was, like we said the vote, you know, there's four people that wanted the new middle school, but they said at the end of the meeting that they felt their, you know, they were listened to, they were respected, would still prefer a new middle school, but at the end of the day, they can support and go forward with this recommendation, too. And so it was, it was a very neat process to see, and Jerry and Kitten and myself, Sandy Lynn, our business director, you know, we sat in the back, and at times, we provided answers for questions. We were just resource people, but we were able to just watch the whole thing, and, and I think, I think they did a great job, and I think we've got a good recommendation here. I can talk about timeline, too, and still open up to questions here. The board will, we're going to ask the board to act on this in January. Vaughn will be here probably the first meeting in January. It'll be a work session, so be able to flush out a lot of the details and possibly the second meeting in January officially act on that and get it moving on what we want to do there. So be up to the school board to do that. But this presentation, you guys did a great job on the presentation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have our 2015-16 calendar approval or discussion.
All right. Yes, the calendar. All right. This calendar, and like I've told people, there's a state law, state statute, that we can start school early for next year. Labor Day is late, it's September 7th. And by state statute, if there's a construction project that is $400,000 or more, you can start early. We had a roofing project that's scheduled for the 1923 portion of the CEC. Obviously, if we move ahead with referendum, we might not have that roofing project, we might have construction. So I'm going to recommend to you tonight, the calendar, it's option two, we came down to two options, but this one, we start early and we end early. And obviously, it's important to end early, especially if you have construction needs. On this calendar, there's no full spring break, but there are three days off, Thursday, Friday, and Monday, around the Easter break in March, the last week in March. We, we did do a staff survey, and I'm not saying make the recommendation because of this, but 77% of the staff were in favor of this calendar. It also provides a snow makeup day, if we need a third day. I think moving ahead, too, and this is something we can talk about, too, for, you know, we've been going on off on spring breaks every other year. We could do a spring break the next year. I think this calendar is for testing. Basically, it's the month of April, first week in May, this is better for students for testing, rather than taking a big, you know, being off 10 days from school. And the other thing I want to make sure you're aware of, too, is that graduation would be on Memorial Day Saturday. Jordan, who passed referendum and has construction starting this late spring or early summer, they're going through the same thing right now. They started a week early, they are ending on that Memorial Day, they're having their graduation on Memorial Day Saturday. I talked to their superintendent, Matt Helgerson, and he said the main thing on that, obviously, you're getting the calendar done now, the earlier the better, and people have time, you know, over a year to plan, obviously, in regards to that. But it's, it's a one-year thing that we're doing, and like I said, starting August 31st and our last day being on May 26th with graduation and May 28th. So the feedback that I've gotten from this calendar has been, obviously, very positive. There are people that would, you know, like to see a spring break, or there's always something with calendars people would like, but I'd like to recommend that, but I'd like you guys to talk about it and see if you've got any concerns or questions.
The feedback's positive, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, the survey was very positive in favor of this one.
And I will say this, too, and this is the first time we've really done a thorough survey. We did, as you remember, the four options about starting early and the starting and ending dates, we went, that went to everybody, staff, parents, and everyone. The second survey was specific, and I think one reason why it was so favorable, like I said, is that people saw that there was days off around that Easter break. It's more of a mini-spring break, but if, you know, someone wanted to take another day or two or three days of vacation around those time off, they could do that. It'd be nice if everyone took their spring breaks during the school spring break, but that isn't always the case either. You need to keep that in mind. But I think it is best for kids, especially going into testing in April, that we're not taking 10 or 11 days off right before testing.
Do you know the number of student contact days in this, or is it fluctuating?
100 and...
Is it up there?
Or is it?
Yeah, 173.
Yeah, 175 for 6 through 12 and 173. Actually, it's, it's, we pick up actually an extra student contact day at the secondary in this calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve this calendar.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Next, Sandy is going to present the revised budget.
Good evening. Tonight is our truth and taxation hearing, and at the truth and taxation hearing, we're also required to discuss the final fiscal year 14-15 budget. So that's what I'd like to present first. You'll notice the actual budget document itself, we have a new format. I'm using a new budget tool that streamlines the budget process into one tool and makes it a lot easier for reporting and analysis. You'll be seeing more of this as we move forward. We didn't fully, I didn't fully utilize it this time, we just got it about a month and a half ago or so, but you'll see more utilization of this tool as I prepare for the 15-16 budget. Just summary of some of the main changes from our preliminary budget that was approved in June. I, of course, used our updated enrollment projections, which really didn't change all that much from our preliminary budget, but it did change slightly. I did decrease special ed revenue by almost $200,000 per MDE projections. And if you know, as I've always told you in the past, I always like to be conservative with special ed revenue. In the future, they're going to be using some prior year data, it'll be easier to predict, but still, as of right now, it's a little bit iffy. They also have a new way of calculating it, and unfortunately, the new way is not going to lead to a lot more money... You can see our general fund year-end balance projected. You see in 13-14, it did increase slightly. Our total general fund balance increased about $400,000, and our unassigned increased about $700,000. This year, based on this budget, we will decline in our fund balance. Our total fund balance, almost $1 million, and our unassigned, about $700,000. Again, this is worst-case scenario, and so, but we did plan for some of this. We have some one-time expenditures, and I'll explain those here now. This shows the year-to-year percent change for our revenue and our expenses, and this is our total revenue and expenses. You can see our expenses are projected to rise seven and a half percent. That's what this budget is based on versus revenue only a little over 3%. But in that 7.5%, of course, we have our powerful learning initiative, which was planned. We have $200,000 in contingency that is almost never used, certainly not the majority of it. We have our wireless upgrade. Again, that was an expenditure that we had planned. We have severance. We've had a lot of teachers retire. We have planned for those payments, and we have money set aside for those payments. And we also had some benefit increases, especially in the case of our defined benefit plans. Our TRA and PERA both increased this year. Now, I'm going to look at the reserved and committed accounts. As you can see, just some highlights, staff development will increase slightly, deferred maintenance will increase slightly, health and safety will go down. That is all in the timing of the projects. Operating capital will go down slightly, not as much as it did last year. The ALC, we expect to break even. Our gifted and talented will rise slightly. Safe schools, whoa, what happened? Sorry about that. Severance, as you can see, we expect to pay out more in severance than we have in past years, but again, that is set aside. It's planned. And then we have a new category this year, and that's turf replacement. $75,000 we'll have committed for that, and we plan to put away $75,000 every year. Our other funds, our nutrition service, we plan to lose some fund balance again this year. Our revenue has been declining in our food service based on the new nutrition guidelines. I guess students don't like oven french fries or whole wheat cookies very much. So this has been a tough, tough area to keep, to get a handle on, and we're trying really hard to find ways to save money, and, but this has been a very tough, most schools are struggling with this, with this, these new nutritional guidelines, although today I heard that they eased them just a tad, perhaps, in the omnibus budget bill at the House and the federal government level. Community service, we expect to increase slightly, and our capital projects, we hope that will be gone at the end of the year because that will mean our stadium is all done, and I believe all that, all that money will definitely, definitely go. So that is the end of that presentation. I would ask for questions as well as an approval of this budget.
I have a question. With the task force report including deferred maintenance, will that impact these yearly budgets then?
Yes.
Okay, so then some of our yearly expenses would be...
Yes.
...rolled into that.
I'm very excited about that possibility because we have some big expenditures looming, and we only get so much deferred maintenance every year, and it's not enough to cover some of those big projects we have coming.
Chances are, if we didn't do a building referendum, we'd have to do a deferred maintenance referendum in the future.
Right. It's very expensive. I mean, we've got a lot... Sandy will be very happy.
Yeah.
She's very happy that deferred maintenance is part of the recommendation from the task force.
And that will save on annual operating costs as well, not just deferred maintenance costs, but this building is incredibly expensive to maintain because of some of the heating and air conditioning issues and so forth, and that will make our less repairs in this building.
And just going back to when you talk about deferred maintenance, that's the 1923 portion. You talk about expensive, but just with the whole HVAC, but it's very costly.
Are you going to have information regarding the window replacement? I know that we settled, but could there be some additional cost to replace them all?
Yeah, we're going to have to talk, yeah, we're going to have to involve the architect on that, too. Craig Most is doing some research on that, so. I'll have information on that for you at the January meeting.
Thanks.
And that would more likely, most of that would come out of next year's budget, the 15-16 budget.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second.
Any other comments? All those in...
Clearly explained, and it looks great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Next, we have the truth and taxation presentation.
Right. Thank you. This is something we do every year, and just take this opportunity to explain to the public a little bit about what school finance is all about, how the tax levies are determined, and so I'll just go through this as I have in the past. First of all, with the law, the TNT law, we are required to have a public meeting on the proposed tax levy, and we have to have discussion on the current year budget, and we have to provide opportunity for public comment. Oh, a slide disappeared on me. Hmm, that's interesting. I just want to go through the, through a calendar real quick. July and August, we provide information to MDE to, so they calculate a preliminary levy. You certify the preliminary levy in September. In November, the county mails all the notices out to taxpayers, which results in this public hearing and the truth and taxation hearing. And then in calendar year 2015, the levies are collected by the county, but it's not revenue for the school district until next year, school year 15-16. Just briefly, how are schools funded? Basically, the state determines the basic gen ed funding formula. This is a brief history of how that funding formula, that basic funding formula has changed. You see this year, it went up about a percent and a half. You can see the history, some years, sometimes it didn't increase for three or four years, but that is the history. We have not, they have not yet determined the funding formula for 15-16 and 16-17. That will be determined in the legislature, and we should know that by this May sometime.
Is that per pupil then, or ADM? Is it per person?
Per pupil unit, yeah. So secondary students get slightly higher.
What, get slightly higher? I'm sorry.
Secondary students would get slightly higher than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, the majority of revenue is determined by the number of students served in the district, and so enrollment is very important, and these are the enrollment projections I presented back in November. And you can see the middle sets of lines, sets of bar graphs show where we're at. For right now, we anticipate the ADMs to be 3,926, next year growing slightly and then starting to decline because of those low birth rates in Scott County as Hazel Reinhardt has projected for us and I've been talking about for a couple of years. The revenue really equals the formula times the pupil served, and under current law, the, most of the revenue is paid by state aid. You can see here our revenue for last year. Our state sources were 71% of our revenues, and local property taxes were about 18%. So you can see we get by far the majority from the state. Several different types of levies. We have voter-approved levies, which include bond votes for buildings. We also have operating levies that are approved by taxpayers. Several of our levies are based on school board decisions, so they're authorized by state statute, but boards can levy them based on local need. Things like safe schools, career tech, deferred maintenance, facility leases, health and safety, reemployment. We also have a board-approved levy that was new last year. That's $300, and it was deducted from our voter-approved operating levy last year. We also have levies set by state formula, which include equity, operating capital, transition, and community service. And we also have a brand-new state authorized, two state authorized levies. One was a student achievement levy that they implemented last year, and that's continuing this year. And then we have the local, location equity levy that is deducted from our voter-approved operating levy. They couldn't do this simple. They had to make it very difficult. Our recommended levy this year is 9.6 million. That's an increase of $183,000 or 2% from last year's levy. See the general fund increasing three and a half percent, community services 14%, and debt service almost remaining steady. Really, the factors contributing to the increased levy, most of it are prior year adjustments from last year that aren't included this year, aren't repeated, and we also had a slight increase in our disabled school care levy and community services to pay for increased needs for caring for disabled students in our after-school programs. This is a history of our levy. Goes back to 2009. As you can see, this year, the top line, it's 9.6 million. Even going back to 2009, it was over 10 million. So I think there's been a lot of factors that go into that, but basically, our levy has fluctuated some, but overall, I think we've done a very good job of managing that This just shows the percentage of our levy that's voter-approved versus board-approved. 61% is voter-approved, and the majority of that, of course, is our buildings that we're paying for, our two elementaries and the addition to the high school.
So the shift in the voter-approved levy to the board-approved is reflected in that, those percentages?
Yep. By fund, you see the general, their debt service is over half of our levy. 41% is our general fund and just a sliver is community services. Tax impact, a home that's worth $150,000 in both years would increase $8 per year, and a home worth $200,000 in both years increase about $10. Now, obviously, not everybody's home maintains the same value. Some increase more than others, so some will see a slight decrease, some would see slightly larger increase, but this would be trying to compare apples to apples. The next requirement of the truth and taxation is to discuss the budget, and I did present that earlier. The next step is that the public would have an opportunity to give feedback to the school board. You will hopefully certify the final levy. The county auditor then calculates the final tax bills, and then they start collecting those from the taxpayers in April and May. So we are asking, I am asking tonight that you certify the levy for 2015 at the $9,558,474. And will be any questions or any feedback from the, from the audience?
Are there any, any questions from the people in the audience?
Good question.
I'll make a motion that the board certifies the levy as presented, $9,558,474.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
One comment before we adjourn. Our next meeting is a work session scheduled for Monday, January 12th at 6:00. We're going to do our reorganization meeting starting at 6:00, so that will be a true school board meeting. If there's any other business we need to address at that time, we can, and then we'll close the meeting and go into work session, and then have our normal monthly meeting at the Fourth Monday of January.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Meeting adjourned.